Okay, at this time, the oaths of office will be administered. The oath will be administered to me first, followed by council members Elwood, Colon, Rustic, and Torgerson. Susie, will you please join me at the podium? I, Mary Miller.
Having been duly elected. To the office of?
To the office of?
City of North Bend.
Mayor.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
According to the law.
According to the law. And the best of my ability.
Okay, more fun, here we go.
Have you stand right there? And may I have you raise your right hand? Thank you, sir. And please repeat after me. I, Brendan Elwood.
I, Brendan Elwood.
Having been duly elected to the office of?
Having been duly elected to the office of?
City of North Bend.
City of North Bend.
Council position number five.
Council position number five.
Do solemnly affirm that I will?
Do solemnly affirm that I will?
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of?
Perform and discharge the duties of?
This office according to the law.
This office according to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
All right. Good job. This is great. I'm so proud. I'm so glad. Oh, yeah. Let's do the, sorry.
I'll be official.
Excuse me. There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Heather Colin, council member Heather Colin, please. But it's a good weird, right? Okay, good. I like that. Please repeat. Please raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Heather Colin.
I, Heather Colin.
Having been duly elected to the office of?
Having been duly elected to the office of?
City of North Bend, council position number three.
City of North Bend, council position number three.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support?
Solemnly affirm that I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
Well done. No, but don't say that, okay? And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Right on. Good job. We'll shake the teeth. It's fun of it. Okay. All right. Trying to keep it light. I hope. Okay, council member, today, Rustic.
Mayor, can you switch positions, please? Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. Hi, there. Thank you for that. And please repeat after me. I, Christina Rustic. Having been duly elected to the office of?
Having been duly elected to the office, sorry.
City of North Bend, position, oops.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, after you.
Position number one.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support?
Solemnly affirm that I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution. And laws of the state of Washington.
Laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially. Perform and discharge the duties of?
Perform and discharge the duties of?
This office according to the law.
This office according to the law.
And the best of my ability. Congratulations. Yeah, Errol, Errol, he's already here. Yep. Okay, may you raise your right hand, please? And please repeat after me. I, Susan Torgerson.
I, Susan Torgerson.
Having been duly elected to the office of?
Having been duly elected to the office of?
Of City of North Bend, council position number seven.
City of North Bend, council position number seven.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support?
Of the United States.
State.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances. And that I will faithfully. And impartially.
Impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of this office.
Duties of this office.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability. Congratulations. I'm having fun. Here we go. Oops, hold on. All right. Thank you, everybody. And Susie, may you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Mayor Pro Tem Alan Gotthoff. Council member Brendan Elwood. Council member Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Council member Heather Colin. Council member Christina Rustic.
Here.
Council member Susan Torgerson. Council member Errol Trimalata. All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a 10-minute break.
Yeah. Yeah, I love you. I'm glad. Thank you for inviting me. Are you okay, my nerve? Yeah, okay, everybody.
Thank you.
I'd like the meeting to be called back to order, please. Well, that's a heads up.
Susan.
Well.
Susan. We need to, we need to call. Yeah, we need to call it back to order. We're past our time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion first from council member Heather Colin and seconded by Susan Torgerson. Let's see, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All motion, the motion carries and is unanimous. We will now have, move on to citizen comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, we would invite you to come forward if you are attending in council chambers or to indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you are attending remotely. We will start with those attending in council chambers first and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Do we have anybody? Remote? No?
No one online.
Okay, okay. Okay, looks like we're good. Okay, well, then we'll move on. So, we're going to move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Item number five, proclamation of the National Mentoring Month. And I will read that to you all. Whereas January 2024 will mark the 22nd anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the needs for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. And whereas the city of North Bend honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs like Youth Success Mentoring, a program of Empower Youth Network, makes our communities and our states stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas, post the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue. And whereas, mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas, quality mentors promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth for a young person and their relationships with other adults. And whereas, students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor as are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas, youth who met, meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs and 27% less likely to start drinking. And whereas, National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in the city of North Bend. Now, therefore, I, Mary Miller, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2024 as National Mentoring Month. In the city of North Bend, I encourage those interested in becoming a youth mentor to contact Empower Youth Network and thank current youth mentors for devoting their time and effort to ensure the success of our youth. Okay, I believe Kathy Highland and Abe Skillperut, excuse me, pardon me for that, are present from Empower Youth Network to accept the proclamation. Can you please meet me? There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. We really appreciate it. I'm Kathy Highland. I am the program manager for, oh, dear, let you go get it, just get a picture of you guys grabbing that. So I am Kathy Highland. I am the program coordinator for Empower Youth Network for the mentoring program, Youth Success Mentoring. I coordinate for all of Soqualmie Valley schools. We need mentors. And it was really nice to walk in here and see four of our mentors. Christina Rustic is a mentor. We have Abe Skillperut as a mentor. We have Judith as a mentor. And we have the wonderful police chief. And we have the wonderful Police Chief as a mentor who sadly just had to stop since he became Police Chief because he's very, very busy now. But we encourage anybody anywhere to mentor. I'm going to leave these in the back. If anybody wants to take one and put it up at your place of business, it would be greatly appreciated. And I'm not going to talk anymore. I'm going to let Abe tell you about mentoring. He's one of our wonderful mentors.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the council, the city of North Bend, our community, the Soqualmie Valley School District, who are all supporting youth mentoring right now. This program, I've been fortunate enough to be a mentor for the past three years to two different students locally. It's been so cool to see them grow, change, open up over the years, even from one session to the next, how they share different things with you, how they open up, how their eyes light up when you ask them about something that you talked about in the previous session, when you ask them about something that they're excited about or something that they really love and enjoy. It's a great experience and we encourage everybody to give it a chance. As an adult, I've been fortunate enough to mentor other adults and also be a MNT. And I have found as a, as a mentor even for adults, you get almost as much out of the session as the person you're mentoring. And I would say it's the same when you're mentoring the youth. Just to be able to have that thirty minutes, sixty minutes with some of those kids. No phones, you're just there to listen, you're there to play games. I played Crazy Eights for almost six months every week with one of the students because that's what they wanted to do. And it was great. But then we started doing other things, started opening up. And again, if you are interested in becoming a mentor, right, come talk to me. Kathy's here to help you get in the program as well. Thank you very much.
Since you're, since you're up there and you're on the video, can you give the number again to where they can get to talk to you about mentoring? Because we don't have everybody here, but you got people on screen.
Kathy.
Thank you.
You can email beamentor@empoweryouthnetwork.org and we'll get right back to you. So, thank you.
Thank you both and keep up the good work. Item six now, appointments to planning commission. Planning Commission Position numbers three and six became vacant with the election of Susan Torgason and the appointment of Errol Trimalata to City Council. During recent interviews for vacancies of on the Economic Development Commission and Parks Commission, the city received many applicants and interviewed numerous applicants, two of whom expressed interest in serving on planning commission. I am recommending the appointments of Mr. White to planning commission position number three with the term expiring May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and Mr. Matlock to planning commission position six with a term expiring May eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. Sam, will you please come forward to the podium and tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving the planning commission?
Hi, my name is Sam White. Well, I'm primarily just interested in getting more involved in city government. For those of you who weren't here, I applied for the open city council position because I was interested in that and Errol got appointed to that. And so in my hopes and aspirations to try to remain involved in city government, I opted to apply for both the parks and planning commissions. I was told I cannot be appointed to both, so I, I decided to prioritize planning commission and I just really want to get into the weeds and find out how things go and help contribute to the way the city evolves over the, you know, the next five, ten years. So, thanks. And just want to give another shout out to Stephen and Errol and myself and Judith. We're all part of the Citizens Academy and I know we have another one coming up here in February. Even though it's full, can alumni still show up to that? All right, all right. Sounds good. So, thanks. Spending a lot of time up here lately. Yeah.
Stephen, if you're able to come to the podium, that would be great. And tell us a little bit about yourself and why you were interested in serving planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members and staff. My name is Stephen Matlock and I've lived in North Bend since nineteen ninety-six. Moved here with our family. Yeah, we were a young family living in a place that we weren't really familiar with and the town made us welcome. And I have tried since then to build community in our town by fostering better relationships with people, by mentioning and promoting local businesses, by attending festivals, by going to various shops. I love this town and I want to see it grow responsibly. I'm a big believer in the idea of strong towns that are walkable, that people want to be, where people want to come and visit and shop and find relaxation. And I want to see North Bend be a place where people love to come, where they come for a short while, or they come here to live. So, that's why I signed up for this position. I'm very glad to be asked to join it.
Are there any questions from council for you, Stephen?
Not so much a question, but extension of gratitude to both. Planning Commission is, as we were just chatting a minute ago, I believe is the belly of our machine here and getting in there and understanding how things operate really give you a greater, greater appreciation, not only for how staff and all of the people here try to make good decisions, but how our community can actually work and come together, especially over time. So, well done. Much appreciation for where you're about to go and thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, I just want to say to Sam and Stephen, I'm super excited to see you guys both step up. You were both very, very engaged during the academy, asked a lot of questions. So, as excited as I was to continue on, I'm glad you guys are continuing on and I think you're going to add a ton of value. So, appreciate you stepping up.
I'd like to say the same thing. I appreciate both Sam and Stephen stepping up. I started in the planning commission. Pre-prepared for a lot of reading. I know our other council members came through. It's a lot of reading. It's a very important part of this community and we need this and I just appreciate anybody who's willing to step up and do the work. So, thank you again for stepping up and coming.
Councilmember Goldtholz, will you please make the motion?
It would be my pleasure. Motion to approve AB twenty-four dash zero zero two confirming the planning commission appointments of Sam White to position three, term expiring May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and Stephen Matlock to position number six, expiring May eighteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
The motion before you is to approve AB twenty-four dash zero zero two confirming the planning commission appointments of Sam White to position number three, term expiring May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and Stephen Matlock to position number six, term expiring May eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. And hold it right there, commissioners. I'm going to come up and present some pins to you at the podium and we're going to get some pictures with you too. So, breathe, join me. Sorry, Stephen, I'm going to ask you to come up a little bit more. Thank you. Okay, item, item number seven, AB twenty-four dash zero three three, twenty twenty-four council standing committee appointments. Mayor Protem, Go Tellify will turn it over to you so you can discuss the assignments and make the motion.
Thank you.
Second. Is there anyone from council would like to comment?
Just one, thank you for assembling this. I know it's hard work and trying to put all the pieces together where our interests lie. And what I'm looking at here is a really good balanced assortment of people in the right committees. So, thank you for doing that.
More? Okay, now that there are no additional comments, the motion before you is to approve AB twenty-four dash zero zero three, confirming the twenty twenty-four appointments to the council's standing committees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, moving on to introductions. Item number eight, AB twenty-four dash zero zero four, motion authorizing memorandum of agreement with Arch for MFTE services. Ms. Deming, will you please provide the staff report?
Thank you. The city of North Bend has a need to monitor approximately twenty-eight affordable rental units located at the Traverse Apartments, formerly known as River Run, benefiting from the city's multifamily tax exemption or MFTE program. The first unit became available for rent in September twenty twenty-three. Staff has requested the assistance of a regional coalition of housing or Arch to provide monitoring services for the units because Arch has both the experience and expertise on staff to provide such services. Arch was established in nineteen ninety-two to create and preserve affordable housing for low and moderate income people in East King County. Arch staff includes approximately nine full-time members to carry out their work program. They currently manage the MFTE program for Bellevue, Bothell, Kenmore, Kirkland, Redmond, and Woodinville. This typically includes review and recommendation on approval of MFTE applications, register MFTE certificates with the county assessor, and file annual MFTE reports with the state as well as other needed ongoing compliance monitoring. At the Arch Executive Board meeting on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Arch approved entry into this memorandum of agreement with the city for the monitoring of the units. Monitoring services include providing income verification, annual reporting, and audit assistance consistent with the city's MFTE program on a fee-for-service basis. The cost for these monitoring services will be paid by Traverse Apartments as a reimbursement to the city and as authorized by the City of North Bend Municipal Code, chapter three point seven eight, multifamily property tax exemption. Partnership between the city and Arch is intended to promote long-term affordable housing opportunities for residents with low and moderate incomes, provide technical assistance to the city on a reimbursable basis, and increase the supply of housing for low and moderate income households in East King County. This Community and Economic Development Committee reviewed this agreement at their December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Council, do you have any clarifying questions?
How long will they be monitoring and taking care of it?
There is an initial term of the agreement, but it does renew automatically. So, assuming everything goes well, it will be hopefully monitored for the entire term. The initial term is twelve years with an optional renewal for twelve more years on the MFTE program at Traverse. But the initial agreement, I believe, is only five years or three years. I'm sorry.
Have a question. And then, and then Traverse is paying for it through that entire term theoretically?
That's correct. Our, our ordinance requires them to cover any costs for annual monitoring or maintenance. So, we will have an agreement with Traverse. And when we get the bill from Arch, we will pass through and bill Traverse for those costs.
Just following up on that question, if costs increase, who picks up that additional cost, say, over the course of several years?
Per our ordinance, they are required to cover the actual costs, whether it's our hourly costs or Arch's hourly costs. If those increase, they are still required to pay those full costs.
Thank you.
And so, since they're east side, where are they based out of and how do they know who to get involved with to do their job?
So, they are based out of the city of Bellevue. It's usually, it's Bellevue staff that I believe technically hires the Arch staff. And as I mentioned, there's nine staff members. They've already been in contact with Traverse and we've made connections because the rentals have already started of the affordable. So, they're already in full contact and help training the Traverse apartment managers about the rental process and requirements for MFT. So, everyone has been in contact and, and working together.
Any further questions? No? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward if attending in council chambers or to indicate in the chat box or by star nine. If you're attending remotely, we will start with those attending in council chambers first and then move on to those attending remotely. Please remember to state your name and the address and record for the record and you have three minutes to speak. Seeing that we have nobody.
No one online wishing to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Jocelyn, will you please make the motion?
I move to approve AB twenty-four zero zero four, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with a regional coalition for housing through its administering agency, the city of Bellevue, for monitoring affordable MFTE rental units in a form and content approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other council member to wish to have a second comment? Okay, now that there are no initial comments, the motion before you is to approve AB twenty-four dash zero zero four, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the regional coalition for housing through its administrative, administering agency, the city of Bellevue, for monitoring affordable FTE rental units in a form of content approved by the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to mayor, council, and administrator concerns and initiatives. Let's see, council, if you'd like to say anything, make a comment. We'll start with Brendan first, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to be back, glad to see a lot of familiar faces, and I'm really looking forward to the next four years of this term. I think we've got some fresh ideas and perspectives that we're welcoming. Really excited that we're going to kick it off right with a visioning exercise so we can understand where everybody fits and sees the future of North Bend with visioning and so forth. So, I think we've got a really good agenda set forth to really set this council up for a lot of success this year. And thank you to our new planning commission members. I really appreciate, as I said earlier, you stepping in and taking, taking the ball further down the road. So, I'm just, again, really, really excited. Thank you.
Member Torgason.
Yes, actually, I want to say it's really an honor and a privilege to serve the North Bend community as a city council member. I am very grateful to be able to do this. I'm proud of North Bend. I love North Bend, people in our town, the culture. Everybody seems to be so helpful and friendly. I've noticed compared to going, if you go to the east side, sorry. But, you know, I just went to the post office today and everybody there was like super kind to one another. I love that. So, anyways, over the next four years, my goal is to make a positive difference for our city and the people that live here. I look forward to collaborating with Mayor Mary Miller, my fellow council members and the city staff. I think that we're all going to make a great team together. I'm grateful that we have two new I'm grateful that we have two new commissioners for our planning groups. That's awesome. And I think you guys are going to be, do a great job. And I just want to say I'm really grateful for being here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman.
Happy New Year. I just want to welcome all the new council members. It's a big change and it's going to be interesting to see how we work together as a group. I think we'll do great. Everybody's heart is in the right place and I'm excited for 2024.
Thank you, council member Errol Tremolata.
Yeah, congratulations to the mayor and to our new council members. Hope everyone had a great holiday. I wanted to just remind everyone that small businesses take a huge uptick during the holidays, but we need to support them 12 months out of the year. So, as much as we enjoy the holidays, don't forget to go downtown, go to our local businesses, January, February, throughout the year. They depend on us even beyond the holidays. So, we had some great times downtown over the last couple of weeks. And so, and look forward to 2024 and all that North Bend has to offer. So, don't forget our small businesses.
Thank you. Councilmember, let's see, Rustic.
Well, thank you. Happy New Year and I'm very excited to be able to join the council starting today. So, I'm looking forward to it. I want to thank the staff for taking time out of your busy Decembers to meet with me and kind of share some behind-the-scenes information that is going to make things very helpful for me. And welcome, Sam and Stephen. Thanks for stepping up and joining. Looking forward to hearing your input on some of the things that the council gets to decide. It's great. And one more shout out for the National Mentoring Month. It was National Mentoring Month a couple of years ago when I decided to become a mentor. And definitely, I think you said it well, that you get as much out of it personally as you put into it. It's a two-way street and, you know, it doesn't have to take a ton of time. And Kathy's been great, very supportive of whatever needs, you know, the mentees have. So, highly recommend considering it and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And councilmember Jocelyn.
Simple, simply want to echo all the enthusiasm and engagement and anticipation for what lies ahead of us in the new year and Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you for your time and engagement and call out, as always, to staff for hanging in over the holidays and keeping the lights on and keeping things functioning. I know the city business does not stop because of dates on the calendar. So, looking forward to it.
And councilmember Go Tell.
Thank you. First off, welcome the new council members who are sworn in tonight. It was exciting to see you guys sworn in. Congratulations, Mary, on a successful first start of the Admiral. You did a great job. We appreciate that.
You're too kind.
Congratulations to the two new planning commissioners. We do appreciate it. We understand it does take time away from your family and we do thank you for taking that service. I am looking, I'm humbled to be the mayor pro temp for this year and I'm looking forward to looking, working with this council and making it a good year for all of us and building some momentum into the year. And everybody, Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a healthy and safe New Year. And that's about all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
It's wonderful. And we're going to move on to our city administrator, David Miller.
Very happy to see all these new faces up here. It's going to be fun working with you. We've got a great retreat coming up in February and hopefully we'll do some strategic planning and make some commitments to one another and move through this year to get a lot done. So, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. And let's see, I'd like to say the city of North Bend and the North Bend Planning Commission invite residents to attend a workshop that will cover the land use element designations and zoning in relation to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Workshop will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, at 6:30 PM at City Hall. The Boy Scouts will be holding a trees recycling event on Saturday, January 6th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at City Hall. North Bend Amateur Radio Emergency Services Team, also known as NBAT, encourages people of all ages who have an interest in amateur radio to pursue current volunteer opportunities by visiting the news section of the city website. The Citizen Academy starts Monday, February 5th and will run for 12 weeks. Registration is now full. You can submit an application to join at Wastelist for a future course. Additional information is on our city website. Also, I'd like to add, if you don't have a moment, I just want to say thank you to all our new council members and all of you council members. I am completely honored to sit amongst you and stand next to you and beside you always. And thank you to our new planning commissioners, Stephen and Sam. Welcome aboard. Thank you for your commitment. Also, would like to thank our wonderful staff for helping me during this transition. I owe each and every one of you my humble thank you all day long. You're the best. So, looking forward to our future together the next four years. Also, I want to thank the community in general. Thank you for having faith in me to step forward the next four years. I humbly and respectfully and so gratefully am appreciative for the honor of this role. I hope we see great things in front of us and we stay hopeful at all times. And let's see, I think that's it for now. So, we're going to go into an executive session and we will be there to discuss collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW 42.30.1414. Executive session was, will be expected to last about 30 minutes. As there is no action anticipated as a result of the executive session, videotaping of the meeting will stop at this time.